I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have regrets from Counselor Clifford, Counselor Burbak, and the mayor should be joining us in a little bit. Joining me in the council chambers is the clerk, and I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Fo.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. Item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Same none.
Moving to item three, which is adjournment to a public meeting under the municipal act. And there is a motion that the special counsel meeting adjourned to a public meeting under the municipal act to hear from members of the public with respect to the draft short-term rental licensing bylaw and to reconvene following the public meeting.
Thank you. A mover for such. Thank you, Counselor Beatty and Counselor Ingram. Thank you, all in favor. And that's unanimous. Thank you. So I'll call the public meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to give counsel and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the draft short-term rental licensing bylaw. The order of procedure for this meeting will be the chief building official Jonathan Dewird will present the proposed draft short-term rental licensing bylaw. Counsel may ask questions but are cautioned not to make comments nor to take a position at this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments, and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A will be read by Deputy Clerk Chris Bantalk. The public is also advised that comments expressed in written materials presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as of this procedure? Moving forward, we will now hear from staff with respect to the proposed short-term rental licensing bylaw, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Dewird for his presentation. There you are. Thank you, Mr. Dewird.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So tonight's public meeting is to discuss the short-term accommodation licensing bylaw. And I just want to give a bit of an overview on it tonight before we go into the question and answer portion. So the intention of this bylaw is the licensing that will ensure safe accommodations in terms of fire safety, building safety, and that accommodations comply with property standards and general sanitation requirements. So in a nutshell, that's the intention behind the bylaw. A few of the questions that we've received prior to tonight's meeting. There may be a little bit of confusion out there as far as defined terms, and the defined terms are important when we're looking at any bylaw. So a few of the defined terms that I think need a little bit of clarification so we understand them. Obviously, there's the bed and breakfast establishment, which is when somebody decides that they want to be the primary resident and they want to have the accommodations within their dwelling. They want to have more than one guest room, and in those cases, the zoning bylaw does dictate that they shall not include a restaurant hotel in short-term rental accommodation, boarding house dwelling, nursing home, or any licensed or supervised accommodation that's protected by an act. Now, the other defined terms that we have that are listed in there is a hostel, which is building accredited for recognized hosteling association. Again, those are permitted with, you know, being an accessory dwelling. We have inns, and the inn is one that we have two definitions. We have a definition from our zoning bylaw, which is a building being used for the purposes of supplying temporary living accommodations to the public and containing a maximum of 10 guest rooms. Dwelling units are combination and may include a principal residence for up to one accessory dwelling unit by the owner operating the facility. Now, when we jump over to the definition in our licensing bylaw, we've honed in just for the purposes of the licensing bylaw that in would mean for the purposes of supplying temporary living accommodation for the traveling or vacationing public and contain a maximum of five guest rooms that are not restricted by occupancy as their principal residence and may include, again, an accessory unit for the operator of the inn. So the purpose of that is to scope the licensing bylaw on the small inn operations that we have so that we can provide proper oversight to those. Another term that we have obviously in the zoning bylaw, which you're all familiar with, is the short-term rental accommodation. Now, that means an entire dwelling that is used to provide sleeping accommodations for no more than 28 consecutive days and is operated by the principal resident. Short-term rentals in this rental accommodation do not include an inn hotel, bed and breakfast establishment, boarding house, or similar commercial or institutional uses. These are also specific to the full use of the building, so this goes further on to talk about single detached, semi-detached, converted, and townhouse dwellings. These are the only units that are actually regulated to 128, or sorry, the 180 days total in the year for the rental, and they do speak to the 28 days. Now, when we go to the definition in the licensing bylaw, we have two additional definitions. A short-term rental, which is not to be confused with the short-term rental accommodation. The short-term rental means a bed and breakfast establishment, which points us to the zoning bylaw. It does include a short-term rental accommodation, hostel, rooming house, and a boarding house is defined within the city's comprehensive zoning bylaw. And it also includes inns and short-term guest rooms, which are defined within the accommodation licensing bylaw. And then we go on to a short-term guest room, which, again, for the purpose of this bylaw, talks about a room or group of rooms designed to be occupied by one or more persons providing sleeping accommodation and may provide kitchen or sanitary facilities. One last term that I wanted to just touch on is the responsible person. We've added a term in there for a responsible person, which could be the owner, operator, or an agent that would be responsible for the short-term rental. A couple other items that were brought up to staff's attention before this meeting. This bylaw does anticipate repealing the current bed and breakfast establishment bylaw and does create one bylaw to deal with all short-term rentals, which would now include bed and breakfast in this bylaw. And it is the intention that the existing licensed establishments, legally established licensed establishments would be grandfathered into provisions of this bylaw. Also, currently, the proposal does not permit bed and breakfast or short-term rentals to function in the same building at the same time. And currently, this, the short-term rental bylaw is limiting all of the short-term rentals to 28 consecutive days per We have a definition of a suite that has also been a couple of questions on. And just for the purposes of all that are watching this, the suite is defined as a self-contained space and typically would include a bedroom, a bathroom, and kitchen facilities. Again, some more questions with regards to provisions on signage. There was some concern that the signage needed to be posted on the exterior building, but the intention is that the interior of the building licenses posted within a meter of the primary entrance as well as the fire the fire safety documentation so that persons renting these spaces know that they're licensed and know that they've been inspected and how to get out in the case of a fire. There is some verbiage with regards to events, and the intention with the verbiage with events, you know, limiting weddings and events is more, again, from the commercial side of things so that we don't have a nuisance in the neighborhood for these properties for items such as noise in parking, street parking in those instances. There was also some questions on section 44m with the required levels of lighting, and those are noted in the building code. So that's where the staff would take the direction on items such as lighting levels that are required. There was also some questions that were brought up with regards to inspection hours. So the item of reasonable hours, as noted in the bylaw, and in accordance with, you know, other policies, typically, we would be dealing with inspections within normal business hours. And further to that, the Ontario Building Code does actually state for items such as warrants that reasonable hours are from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So that kind of gives an idea of what the reasonable hours would be for, for, I would say, more the enforcement side. I assume that staff will be dealing with things between 8:30 and 4:30 for most of the licensing inspections. There was a couple of questions with regards to staffing, and we are anticipating a need for new staff to help us for the initial onset of this bylaw. And there is, you know, the potential that we may need additional staff on top of the first staff member to get this off the ground, and that will be determined closer to 2024's budget once we know what the scope and the work will be involved with this bylaw. There were a few comments received with regards to fees as well, and, you know, currently, the proposal that we have before you is to waive fees for the 2023 calendar year and that we would work as staff to track the time involved and that we would come back in 2024 with a more comprehensive proposal. Once we know how many hours are required for certain types of inspections and licensing, we would come back to counsel with that as part of the 2024 budget. There were also some concerns about the annual renewals coming due on January 1st and expiring on December 31st. That is something that we've been considering as well, and we would be, we would be open to potentially changing the time span of the licensing, possibly to more coincide with the Stratford Festival sometime around March 30th or April 1st to March 31st. Changeover just to get us away from that Christmas holiday as well as more consistent with what the festival is. I think that would help out some of the operators, especially those that don't operate year-round and have to wait to get insurance back to us. Speaking of insurance, there have been some concerns about the 2 million liability insurance going up to 5 million. And I just wanted to bring to councils and the public's attention that that was determined through consultation with the city solicitor and the city's insurance provider. So that was the number that they had come up with when we had looked at that. The last item that I just wanted to touch on tonight before we move on to the comments was the enforcement model. And again, as I've mentioned before, the enforcement model would consist of an education period, and that would move into active enforcement. We do anticipate that we will have to use enforcement with certain cases. But the intention is that, you know, staff will be able to work with all of those legal and illegal operations and turn them into legal short-term rentals as we move forward. One of the tools that we are proposing to use on that, and I think it was brought up as well, is the, the city is intending to look into AMP's administrative monetary penalties, and that would allow the bylaw officers to deal with some of the minor infractions in a more reasonable and a faster turnaround. So that would also help us with the enforcement as we go forward, another tool in the toolbox, if you will. At this point, that is the only presentation I have, but I'm sure there will be lots of questions, and I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Dewird? Thank you for the presentation. Counselor Anderson?
I just would, just want to make sure I've got this clear in my head. So we're repealing the bed and breakfast bylaw? Is all the wording that was in that bylaw put into the short-term the new bylaw?
So through the chair, yes, all of the current verbiage that was in the current bed and breakfast bylaw is there. And then there are additional provisions that apply to all short-term rentals within the city that's also been included.
I think there's confusion where bed and breakfasts can operate basically all year, right?
That is correct. Yes, they can.
But short-term is only when you're having somebody stay less than a month, so 28 days. That's where that 28 days came in from, right?
So the 28 days is for all short-term rentals. The 180 days for the total rentals only applies to the full unit of a single semi-converted or a townhouse dwelling. And those are the, those are the items that are referred to in the zoning bylaw as the short-term rental accommodation.
Thank you.
Counselor Seven?
Thank you. I was just wondering, were different fees or types or sizes of accommodators considered? Or was it, I'm just wondering if you could just expand on why I would decide to go on a flat fee? Just a little more for people watching, perhaps?
For sure. And through the chair, yeah, the intention, when we looked at it, we looked at the models of various other providers with our other municipalities within our region and across the province. There are some that use a by-room rate. Their by-room rates are significantly more than, you know, for instance, our per-room rates. Some are almost $300 a room, and they just stack. Other providers charge flat rates. Our intention was that really, there's not a lot of administrative difference in the time, whether you're doing a two-bedroom or a five-bedroom, whether you're doing the inspections or whether you're doing the administrative time. So that was kind of where we were leaning with a flat rate, again, with that equity lens on there. But as we go through this next year, if counsel decides that we will waive fees for 2023, the intention is to really track our actual hours spent on the unit so that we can come back with the 2024 budget and be able to tell you that, in fact, it does take the same amount of time, or we were wrong, and it takes much more time to do more units, and we would have a different scheme for funding or for the fees come 2024 budget time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You did answer my follow-up question whether or not when you come back, there would be a potential for, to see how things go then, but that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, Mr. Dewird, just before we move into the registered delegations, would you prefer doing, answering all the questions at the very end or as we go along with the delegates?
Through the chair, I have no concerns one way or the other, so I'll leave it, leave it to you.
Okay, all right. So at this time, then, I'm going to ask Mr. Bantalk to bring in our first delegation. Just a reminder to the delegations that we have an extensive list, so we're going to build in about a 10-minute time period for you as you present tonight. So, Mr. Bantalk? Oh, I see, Counselor Henderson, I apologize.
That's okay. You were reading. I'm just wondering, how are we dealing with the questions, answers in chat art?
We're going to do that. We'll do those at the very end after delegation. Yes, and Mr. Bantalk will address those as well. Okay, so I'm turning to the clerk, and is Mr. Bantalk available? There he is. Thank you.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. I believe we have the Reverend on the line.
Thank you. There you are. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Mayor Matheson, who's absent, Deputy Mayor Ritzma and counselors. The following statement includes questions and concerns from the Saba membership and some independent stakeholders, which is to be included as correspondence for the next council meeting and added to the agenda in order to be completely answered at that time. Additionally, all questions are to have written answers, and the Saba delegation is to be recorded as public domain for future FOI requests. Please correspond in writing when this will promptly be done. While we understand this bylaw has been in the works for some time, you're all well aware that this is high season for all stakeholders. We are recuperating after the two-year COVID shutdowns, yet counsel keeps pushing their agenda in this climate. We've restated this is unfair and unreasonable gameplay many times to no avail with no response from many counselors. This reads clearly to those of us in tourism and does not bode well with upcoming elections. While we appreciate answers to some of the questions provided by Chief Building Official Dewier this evening, all questions and concerns must be verbalized for the record. These questions and concerns are coming from our Saba membership, and they are as follows. Number one, is this new bylaw in fact replacing the current B and B licensing bylaw? We need to get clarity on this, as it actually does not say it anywhere in the proposed bylaw. If yes, do you plan to grandfather in all B and Bs who have held licenses for years on end? We know that city holds all of our current documentation already. For example, parking spots, room measurements, fire plans, floor plans, et cetera. Number two, to add more confusion under the question of, on the Stratford City page that reads, can a bed and breakfast establishment also be used as a short-term rental? It says, if the principal use of the B and B establishment is for residential purposes and provides living accommodations to the principal resident and represents a principal residence, it may not be a short-term rental, as such use would contradict the provisions of the city zoning bylaw. So then, in effect, since the majority of licensed Saba members are all principal residences of their owner as owner-operators, it would seem that this proposed bylaw does not encompass them, and they would remain governed by the current bylaw. Number three, will City Hall have to hire new extra staff to administer the new draft accommodation bylaw? And if so, may we know what that will cost and where the funds will be raised? Number four, please explain why city is imposing a 5 million liability insurance requirement for STRs. Where does city derive this number based on what? Please break it down further. Smaller B and Bs who will face relatively larger, sorry, smaller B and Bs will face relatively larger impacts. B and B insurance policies can expect a range of increase from an additional lower cost at $85 a year to upwards of $900 a year. This is not sustainable for B and Bs who have had, who have less than five bedrooms. Number five, why is city imposing a requirement to display licensing information on the exterior of a property? This is very private information. Please expand and unpack this point completely for our understanding. Additionally, the vernacular in the proposed bylaw says "may", while Airbnb has declared it as a requirement. So please clarify whether or not it's mandatory to be placed on the outside of the established business. Number six, regarding point 3.7, what does city plan to do with established licensed B and Bs who've been hosting, holding events as an established business for years already? Additionally, is city saying that B and B operators can't host family or friends for events such as baby blessings, weddings, et cetera, when the average private citizen homeowner can do this without any special licensing or fees or fire inspections, et cetera? Additionally, the last part of this, any similar group activity is undefined and subjective. Please name these activities specifically. Number seven, regarding 4.4m, confirmation of sufficient levels of lighting to facilitate the safe passage of occupants. Again, this is subjective. How is sufficient level actually determined and by whom? Number eight, regarding 4.7, city must tell us based on what? That they decline an application for licensing since they're saying the fee is non-refundable. Based on what? By what definition? This seems an unjust and punitive method of attracting would-be licensees. Number nine, regarding 6.1, 6.2, please define reasonable. This needs to include a specific timeframe, and again, this timeframe saying reasonable, what does reasonable mean? It's subjective. The point is moot. Number 10, there is confusion about whether or not B and Bs will have to pay their usual licensing for 2023. Some stakeholders were told by city licensing office that B and Bs will not have to pay any licensing fees in 2023, while others have a different understanding whereby they still have to pay for their license as usual for 2023 until 2024, at which time B and Bs will fall under the new bylaw terms for payment. Then, from the Q and A, I quote, "A decision has not been made on whether or not the city will implement a licensing fee in 2023." Even tonight, we've already had a response or a response to this question that's convoluted because it, we were told one way and then told another way. Sorry, that needs to be clarified. What is the actual plan going forward? Additionally, within other tourism-based communities, it's policy that licensees only need to be issued one time per year, or sorry, per five-year period. So why then does Stratford insist on yearly licenses? Number 11, going forward, there seems to be some non-qualified, unjustified contention that B and Bs are not in demand by today's traveler. This season, traditional B and Bs are turning down tourists by the dozens. In reality, traditional B and Bs are highly desired and sought after by sophisticated tourists who demand excellence in their Stratford experience. Any Saba member can justify this by their own numbers, and our board can also justify these statements based on internal association correspondence. Traditional B and Bs should be governed under their own separate bylaw, not included with other establishments such as rooming houses, hostels, and so on. Thank you for all your future and further considerations towards our concerns and the development of this bylaw. Sincerely, Reverend Rhonda Reed, President, Saba, Stratford. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn then back to Mr. Dewird. I'm assuming that those questions will be answered in, as requested, some of in writing at some point, correct? While we're waiting for Mr. Dewird, I'm going to turn to Mr. Bantalk and welcome. There you are, Mr. Dewird. So those questions that were listed, those you have, and you can respond to as the process unfolds.
Yes, through here, they will be, they will be responded to, yes.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn back to the deputy clerk and invite our next delegation.
Hi there, Marie. Can you hear us?
Yes, fine. Thank you. Go ahead.
I can hear you. Can you see me or not?
No, we cannot.
I don't have a I don't have a place that says for, anyway, if you can't, can't. I don't have a place. Okay, all right. We'll just proceed. Following statements of concern and questions are to be recorded as correspondence for the next council meeting in order to be, to be answered at that time. Additionally, I want this same delegation recorded as public property domain for future pre-dual information requests. I have asked a number of questions in writing. I believe everyone has a copy of my, my comments. I would ask that they be responded to in writing as well. There are a number of concerns set out as well, and I would like them responding to in writing. I request that the clerk place this correspondence in communications and put it on the agenda for the next council meeting. Those are my preliminary remarks. I'd like to point out that my wife and I own a bed and breakfast in Stratford, Morningside Rose Bed and Breakfast. For the past 14 years, we have been pushing for a level playing field where all short-term accommodations are treated the same. In fact, I made a presentation to counsel some years ago to get them to consider this. I was dismissed without any consideration of the issue. Now, the council seems to be pushing forward without due consideration of the impact this will bring. Why are we in such a hurry? Why put the bylaw first and then the public meeting after? Obviously, the public meeting should have come first and then the bylaw. Same process was done with the mat, even though counsel promised public meetings before it was implemented. Why are we in such a hurry? Why did the council and the city not live up to their previous commitments? Why were the promised public meetings not held? Why was the review of the STA, now Destination Stratford, not held? This appears to be an attempt to avoid meaningful consultation and to railroad these bylaws into place despite valid concerns. I would also point out, I am specifying my own concerns, although I have spoken to several other bed and breakfast owners and have received input from them. Although I have spoken to several other bed and breakfast owners and have received input from them, the concerns set out here are my own. I would suggest, however, that I'm not alone in these concerns, and I'm sure you will hear here many of the same ones. Several times tonight. It is my opinion based on discussion and knowing how the bed and breakfast industry works that the cumulative effect of this by law will result in many bed and breakfast discontinuing business. The following points cover my concern with this by law. By law limits short term stays to twenty eight days. What is magical about twenty eight days? Many bed and breakfast also taken chef school students or festival artists. What is required to do this? How can bed and breakfast meet any requirements to take any in guests for longer than twenty eight days? The suggested fee is set at five hundred dollars for all. This is considerably higher than the current by law for one, two, or three bedroom bed and breakfast. It is also, in my opinion, too high in the first place. We have a third party inspection of our smoke detectors, CO detectors, fire extinguishers, and emergency lights. The inspection takes at least one half hour since this is the length of time the emergency lights must be on. This is done every year and a certificate provided. The cost is one hundred to one hundred and fifty dollars plus HST. The inspection by the city and fire department is considerably shorter. And I cannot imagine that paperwork would be any more difficult or time consuming than that done by the third party inspector. Everything is computerized and the by law is proposing that only electronic licenses would be issued. How can a fee of five hundred dollars be justified? If that is the cost of the city inspection, then I would suggest that it be turned over to a third party who can do it more economically. Is this a possibility? Why would the rental of an entire house not be subject to a higher fee? Even though I believe five hundred dollars is more than an inspection costs. It would seem that if in the inspection of a one bedroom bed and breakfast would cost this much, surely the inspection of an entire house would cost at least double. The effect of this provision would be for the small bed and breakfast to pay for the inspection of the larger short term rental accommodation. In light of this, does the city plan to review this, review and change this fee structure? The expiry provision in the by law is for all licenses to expire on December thirty one. Bed and breakfasts are allowed to do business for the entire year. How does this city intend to ensure that inspections are done and licenses issued prior to? Expiary so that we can continue on January first. An alternative would be to extend a license until the city is able to conduct their inspection. Another alternative would be to issue the license for one year as the by law states in six point three. The inspection could then be done in March, the license issued in April and expire the following April. This would also reduce the burden of having the inspections all done prior to December thirty one. Which alternative would the city implement? Which alternative would the city consider? Bed and breakfast have for some time had serious concerns about enforcement of the current by law. The city has been aware of illegal bed and breakfast and other short term accommodations for some time. Nothing was done to enforce the by law with the exception of a few letters which had very little effect. What assurances do we have that this by law will be enforced? What assurance do we have that the current illegal bed and breakfast will be included in the licensing? What assurance do we have that the current legal licensed bed and breakfast will not be at an economic disadvantage once again? What actions will the city take to enforce this by law? What process will the city put in place to ensure that enforcement will continue in the future? The new by law has a number of additions from the current bed and breakfast by law. The application must contain. A floor plan, and I'm quoting. A floor plan of the short term rental property clearly indicating the location and number of short term guest rooms, the proposed total occupancy limit. And for short, for each short term guest room accompanying photographs, its dimensions, a description of its proposed use and the proposed number of beds. This has an addition, has additions to the current requirement. The renewal application requires only the submission of changes. Currently licensed bed and breakfast have submitted a floor plan but are not required to submit photographs. I presume that since there is a floor plan on file and the city and fire department inspected the bed and breakfast. Prior to issuance of the license, this would not be required. Please let me know if this is the case. And I quote again, a letter of compliance from the Electrical Safety Authority dated within twelve months of the date of the application indicating property and that. The prop, property and that it's proposed use complies with electrical safety code. Since the licensed bed and breakfast has already been inspected, this would only be a requirement if there were changes. Please confirm that this is the case. I'll put that in a question just in case, but that is a concern that I asked to be answered as well. Is this the case? Provision for insurance in the amount of five million dollars. What is the rationale for the substantial increase from the two million in the current bed and breakfast by law? This is not part of the renewal application. The licensing requirement. In nine point zero dot J states, the licensee shall provide to the city an updated certificate of insurance as required by this by law prior to the expiry of the current certificate of insurance. It does not provide an amount. Will currently licensed bed and breakfast be required to increase their insurance from two million to five? In addition to what I put in in writing to you. I have done a little bit of research. The increase from two million to five million depending on, will depend on the establishment. But it will vary between three hundred and nine hundred dollars in addition to the current insurance. Another major, major increase in cost. Especially to the small B and B. The other changes to the application are not included in the renewal application would currently licensed and inspected bed and breakfast be required to provide the documentation. Please, please specify which would be required if any. The renewal application contains the following statement which requires. Quote. Any other information required pursuant to this by law? What other information would be required? The definition of bed and breakfast is not in the by law. It is in the zoning by law. Why was the definition of bed and breakfast not included in both bylaws? It would have saved a lot of confusion. The definition of short term rental is in the zoning by law, but not in this by law. Why not? The definition of in is in both with only the number of rooms changed. Why? It is my firm opinion that the requirement set out in this by law will seriously reduce the number of bed and breakfasts in Stratford. Although I do not make any pretense that I'm speaking for any other short term rentals, I firmly believe that they also will. Find the conditions to honor us to continue as well. I believe the expenses, the increased expense will make. Many small bed and breakfast. Decide to to leave the business and and quit the bed and breakfast. Thank you for your consideration. Those are my comments. I will answer any questions on them if anyone has.
Any, any questions from council? So thank you for your presentation. I see Cody seven, sorry, and Counselor Henderson. Go ahead, Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, married to you. Did you say the increase that you you looked up the insurance was three to four hundred dollars more?
Three to nine hundred.
Three to nine hundred. And that's annually. Thank you.
Counselor Henderson.
Yes, I I was just going to clarify that the five million was because of the insurance. Because I know we run, I'm on a nonprofit. Group and ours is going up. Three hundred dollars changed it from two million to five million. So. It is a, an increase, of course, for sure, and. The price of everything is going up. Like my understanding is the bed and breakfast. Is for the whole year. What we're implementing is short term only. People that want to rent out. For less than twenty eight days to a person. And this came about because, as you said, Mary, we've been working on this for all, a long time because of. Bed and breakfast establishment, I remember when they came to council. And they've been working on it and going to zoning things and. And different things, it's been steadily being worked on and it was close to being done in twenty twenty and then COVID hit, so. That finished that off, but this is to ensure like you're saying. That you want them to be doing the same thing you are having to get the fire code and all that done. I hope that helps clarify that a bit.
The, my comment regarding the, the license. It currently expires on December thirty first. Doesn't. Isn't in effect until issued. And currently. Our license is getting issued sometime between March and April. We cannot operate without a license apparently under this, this by law, therefore we cannot do business between January and April. That, that was the meaning of my comment.
Counselor Hen Ingram, thank you.
Thank you. And so I just wanted to point out that I think our chief building official, Mr. Dewey, did actually, did answer a bunch of these questions and comments in his introduction and his presentation. So he did talk about perhaps changing the dates on the licensing from. December thirty first, January first kind of timeframe to March thirty first, April first. I I just would like to. Publicly state. For those people listening that it, I have actually suggested to staff. That the definitions that are contained in the zoning by law. Be referenced in the bed and breakfast by law. I think that's a, it's a good cross connection. It will not be verbatim. It's just a reference referring you back to the actual definition of zoning by law. The reason that they won't be duplicated verbatim is that anytime there's an update or a change to that definition, then you have to change multiple bylaws. If you only just reference the definition as defined in the zoning by law, you only have to make a change to one by law as opposed to, to. If not more. So just a note for anybody watching.
That would be a step in the right direction, in my opinion. In regard to the, the comments made by the. Building Department, the. It doesn't solve my problem if the, the license goes or ends in March. If, if the license, the next license doesn't start April first. If you, if you understand.
I do. You're, you're talking about the time delay in terms of the processing and, and so, Mr. Dewey, if you're available to comment on that, I do believe there would be some flexibility. Provided on the, on staff's behalf for those that have put in their renewal license application and if it isn't issued for, you know, a week or two after. That particular date, I'm sure there would be, be some flexibility. Could you comment on that, please?
Yeah, for sure. Through the, through the chair. Just, just add some clarity to that. Currently, when we were doing the inspections for the bed and breakfast, and this is the first I'm hearing that this is a potential problem. They were coordinated to situate with the majority of the bed and breakfast would be opening for the season. So. Again, this is the first I'm hearing that this might be a disconnect between the inspectors. The inspection wasn't delayed. For, for lack of, you know, resources or lack of anything other than that, they would coordinate all of the inspections in the spring. Before the, the operators would open. One, one of the provisions in the current by law is that we needed to have copies of the current valid insurance in, in our hands before we would do the inspection. And I know that as well as the, the fire inspection was one of the delays. Because it didn't make sense for us to do an inspection and not have those documents. So. Again, I don't believe it was a functional issue on our, our part by not getting out there so much as it was a, you know. A structural in the sense that, you know, until that time. So I'm not sure that answers your question, Mr. Sanderson, but. You know, if that's the case, I think we could. Very well have something that, you know, provided it's not applied for on the thirty first of March that we could have the license for, for the April first. Using those dates i- if we decide to.
Thank you.
That's all one of my problems, no question.
Thank you. Anything further for Mr. Sanders? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation and questions. And I will turn back to Mr. Bantalk, Deputy Clerk, to bring our next delegation forward, please.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma, it's my understanding that the next delegate, Amanda Hatton, is presenting from the same location as Mr. Sanderson and may already be available.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. Very good. Go ahead, Ms. Hatton.
My name is Amanda Hatton and my husband and I own and operate Avery House Bed and Breakfast in Stratford. And my apologies, I came a few minutes late, so it is possible that some of my questions were answered in the initial. Presentation that was given. But there are three new terms that are being used and I'm confused about the similarities or differences between them. One is short term rental, the other is short term rental accommodation. And the third is short term guest room. So I would appreciate some clarification on. The similarities and differences of those terms. My next question is specific to the frequently asked question document that was handed out. Part two, page four, there was a question, can a bed and breakfast establishment also be used as a short term rental? In the reply, there is the sentence that guest rooms in bed and breakfast establishments shall not be suites. And I am looking for clarification on what is the definition of a suite? My next series of questions is in the draft short term licensing by law four point four H. This is the first I have ever heard of this Electrical Safety Authority. So who are they? What is the electrical safety code? What is the process involved in me getting a letter from them? And how much will this cost me as an accommodation business? My next question is, is from the draft short term licensing by law four point four K. You discussed the increasing the liability insurance to five million. Debate to date, the liability insurance has been two million. Why the increase? An additional expense for accommodations currently in recovery mode. This expense could be mitigated if the increases were phased in over the course of several years. For example, one million increase per year over three years. Between the math tax and the liability insurance increase and the liability insurance increase will need to be passed on to our guests because we are not nonprofit organizations. There will be a large increase in the cost of staying in Stratford. Draft by law point five point three references that licenses are not transferable. They're to the property owner, not to a property itself. How do bed and breakfast owners preserve the value of the business and the property when selling if the buyer has no insurance that they will be able to secure a license? Is it correct to assume that a licensed accommodation being sold will have some kind of reassurance? That the business can continue as it did before the sale? Where is the language in the by law that articulates this? And also along those lines, can you confirm that existing bed and breakfasts that have current licenses? But also have a variance within the existing bylaws will have those variances carried over? And where is the language in the draft by law that articulates this? And those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dewey, do you want to respond to any of those that haven't been answered at this point?
Through, through the chair, I think if it's, it's helpful, I can, I can definitely try to. Mind a couple of those. I've been taking some notes. I do, I do think the, the item with regards to the electrical as a safety authority that is. That is a separate government or pseudo government body that looks after the electrical safety within. All things, whether they're new or renovated buildings. So you need to get a permit for them if you're doing work to your property. In this case, we'd be looking for a certificate that the properties are up to code. From the electrical safety. I am not aware whether there's a cost at this point. I can look into that a little deeper. Historically, there was not, but as with all things, I think cost recovery is on everybody's mind, so we can look into that and get a better answer on that. I think we've answered the, the insurance questions already multiple times. The other one with the transferability. The transferability of the license, I, I think the, the issue there is that. If somebody was to sell the business, the intention would be that the the new owners could apply for a new license within the city. So that we would have to go through the whole process. The same being said, if the the. Establishment moved to another building within the city, we would need a new license for those. We wouldn't be able to transfer that license to another building within the. Within the city, sorry. I think those are probably the big ones that I can answer there.
Counselor Henderson.
Could you also answer about, I think she mentioned about some of the bed and breakfasts have like a variance? Would that be included?
Right, right. Yes, sorry. Yeah. So if there is a variance, I think I mentioned earlier that the intention would be that the the. Any variances or any existing bed and breakfast will be grandfathered into the new licensing regime. At that point as well, we would we would look into any variances that are on those properties. And my my understanding would be that those would move forward with that property as well.
Counselor Henderson, I see you follow up.
I had one more when she raised about the licensing. So. When they come in and inspect to make sure the wiring is updated, which is a good thing, you don't want to be running, say, sixty amp or something, but. Will that be a permanent thing there unless something changes in in the electrical codes that they just do it once?
So through the the intention with that provision is that, yes, any changes. So if, you know, if there was a change to the bed and breakfast, let's say they did some renovations, it's they did some work, we would we'd be looking for a certificate. Of completion from the ESA to make sure that that work was inspected and and completed by licensed professionals.
So when they do it the very first time, that's it until there's changes, right? They don't have to do it every year.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? And and I remind both council and our presenters that there is going to be a follow up report from the questions. That will come forward at infrastructure, transportation and safety. So if I see no other questions, I thank you, Amanda, for your presentation and your questions. And I'll ask the clerk Deputy Clerk if he can bring in our next delegation.
Hi, Jack, can you hear us?
It's Jack and Karen, yes.
Yes, we can hear you. I'm sorry, we had technical difficulties getting on, so I missed some of Mister Deward's opening. But I would like to make sure the following comments and questions are to be recorded. As correspondence for the next council meeting in order to be answered at that time. Additionally, we want the same delegation recorded as public property domain for future freedom of information requests. Thank you. And honorable counselors and to the colleagues in the wings listening. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with this book. Could you see me? Am I, am I on?
No, you're not on video.
Okay, I'm not. Okay, so thank you. I thought it was. I have a book that a guest from Vermont brought me a week or two ago. And it's called A Star Danced, The Story of How Stratford Started The Stratford Festival. By Barbara Reed and Thelma Morrison, published in nineteen ninety four about the starting of the Stratford Festival. That was Tom Patterson's dream and aided by the vision of Tyrone Guthrie. I'd like to quote a couple of passages from this before I begin my own questions and comments about the bill. And the people of Stratford saw the light of his great vision, flung off the shackles of materialism and shouted a mighty shout. We will follow your dream and build a great thing here in the wilderness that all mankind will wonder at and say. Great is the glory of Shakespeare and of Stratford. His home in the new world. Now to put that dream to work. So thanks to the ladies of Knox Church, festival guests were well fed, but there was still the thorny problem of where they were to stay. Fran Tompkins says Stratford had exactly two hotels in those days. The Windsor and the Queens and one motel, the Rose Cart, the Rose Court, sorry. Obviously, additional accommodations had to be found. Once again, festival organizers resorted to a homespun solution. They asked Stratford residents to open their homes to festival guests, thus providing private accommodation. From the very beginning, visitors were called festival guests, not tourists. They still are. Bed and breakfast establishments are big business almost everywhere these days. Been on Ontario in nineteen fifty three, the idea of sleeping in a stranger's house was practically unheard of. Tom Patterson went on the radio with an appeal to the local citizens to open their homes and many responded, she said. The renting of rooms in private homes was a novelty to the festival guests and to the householder and both benefit visit. Both benefited. It wasn't hard to persuade people to take in festival guests. Florence Patterson also said the novel arrangement offered benefits to both sides. The guests had free parking, access to private gardens, late night snacks, breakfast, and were often able to walk to the theater. In many cases, they were treated like family, told the festival story enthusiastically and pointed in the direction of the best stores. And most interesting antique shops. For the householder, there was the pleasure of doing something concrete to help the festival and the interest inherent in entertaining people. From all walks of life. So. Jack and I have been running our bed and breakfast for thirty five years in Stratford. This is half the number of years. Next year will be the seventieth anniversary. This was a vision from Tyrone Guthrie and Tom Patterson particularly to start. The Stratford Festival and hence the put Stratford on the map and to drive our economy. I feel this has been a slap in the face first to have the map passed before public consultation and now this. I spoke with Mister Deward this afternoon and it was told for bed and breakfast, it is a twenty day maximum. Per per client, so that we cannot have anybody stay any longer than twenty eight nights concurrently. This is a problem because most of us are only getting requests when the Stratford Festival is operating. Hence, we have had, we've had several requests from people in the Stratford Chef School, festival artists. University of Waterloo. Students as well as people who are looking to buy property in Stratford, needing a place for a month or two. But over twenty eight nights, this would this new bylaw would not allow us to provide these. Needs for the the traveling public and the people who study in our great city. I I really take issue with that. And why would an establishment need to be empty one hundred and eighty five of three hundred and sixty five days? If we're only allowed to operate and have guests for a hundred and eighty nights. The other thing, a point that I spoke with Dr. Mister Deward about was the five million dollar increase insurance. I wrote, I phoned my insurance company, which is O R Insurance, a reputable firm. That many of you may be familiar with. Currently, we are paying two thousand two hundred and sixty three dollars and four cents. A year for our insurance. He, I got an email today finally. After several phone calls trying to get this information before the meeting. And ours premium would increase by nine hundred and two dollars to three thousand one hundred and sixty five dollars and four cents. Each year for a small Ontario cottage on Bay Street in the heart of Stratford. I am really angry, as you can probably tell by my voice, I we have gone by all the hoops and whistles and rules. A fire inspection every year, insurance premiums higher every year. Bylaw enforcement inspections, we we had to get a variance for our parking, which I hope will will stay. We use our common sense, we have courtesy for our guests, we put our heart, soul. Blood, sweat and tears in this. It's a labor of love and I am really, really upset, demoralized by all of you. I am, I find that there is no support. This is like a punch in the face from from you. I really think we need greater clarity and a greater comprehension of the whole entire picture. Where did this industry, the B and B business start? It, you know, it's not been a, we're not the short term accommodator who comes in and wants to make quick money doing a Airbnb. And then sell at a profit. We've been doing this for thirty five years and a lot of my colleagues have been in this for a long time as well. And many of us are seniors. My husband will be turning seventy eight in a couple of months. I'm over sixty five, but I won't tell you exactly how old. And really, this this, most of us are over sixty five. And we're doing this because we don't have great pensions from working in the government or being a teacher or whatever. We need this income. And I think all these rules are outrageous. And I don't think it's of any benefit to anyone. And I think you should come up with some other ideas than a four percent accommodation tax, the mat. You could, I I wrote you several emails suggesting different options of ways to do this. There are so many traveling public in Stratford who never stay overnight and they're finding the costs are getting higher and they come for day trips. Why don't you, they go to restaurants, they picnic, they go to stores, why not tax one of those people? There's who have the infrastructure, who have staff to do payroll, to do accounting. We do the business ourselves. We do all the work from cleaning toilets to making beds, to to putting ourselves in the front lines. Dealing with, you're all behind screens on a Zoom. We're face to face. This afternoon, I learned of a colleague who has a B and B, whose husband has cancer, who's been going through radiation. They had guests last week, they just got a call yesterday that the guests tested positive. They have to now worry, now are they going to test positive and are they going to be spreading it to anybody else who stays in their residence? I think you should really take this into account, how we've had our businesses decimated for the last two years and we're just getting back on our feet. And I think you should really account and get some more clarification and have some empathy. For those of us who have given so much of our lives and our souls and our hearts to Stratford as well as our many tax dollars. Over the years. And and as for weddings, how dare you tell us a bed and breakfast? That they cannot have a wedding. A wedding doesn't have to be three hundred and fifty people. I, we have had one couple who got married on Tom Patterson Island, they brought two witnesses, four people plus they invited us. Took us out for a nice dinner at the former church restaurant. That was it. I don't think we should have the word wedding in there. Or you could have a restriction. It's over so many people, but I don't think this is fair at all. And having the license on every bit of documentation, if we have any kind of advertisement, I don't think that's fair. If you put a little teeny ad in the festival visitors guide, that costs a thousand dollars for three hundred characters. These license numbers or code would add up to more. And every extra character over three hundred is another cost involved. I I would ask that we have some grandfather clause for the pre-existing forty one licensed B and Bs. Who have been following all the rules all these years, done all the inspections, kept up to code. And just perhaps consider this for people starting out in the business. Not for those of us who have done our our due. We have paid our dues. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Karen.
Thank you.
I'm gonna turn to. Mister Band Talk for our nest next delegation, please. Counselor Henderson.
Could we have Jonathan clarify that about the weddings and that? Mind just saying that's for the short term only, not the bed and breakfast? So we have a clarification on that? Okay, thanks.
Through the chair, the way the current bylaw is written, it is for all short term rentals, so it would include the bed and breakfast.
And did it in the past?
It did not. No, no, that that came out of a review of of many of the surrounding municipalities. They had similar provisions.
Is it possible that, like my understanding was, the bed and breakfast by law is being repealed. But and then it's being put in here. But now here's an example of something that wasn't in the bed and breakfast. It's possible for us to have something to tell us which things have been added to the bed and breakfast? I think that maybe where some of the confusion is coming in, because I didn't realize that. I what I saw short term rental, I thought that meant. Just for the people that are having people for less than twenty eight days.
Mister Dewar?
Yeah, through the chair, I think we could provide some more clarity with. Changes from the bed and breakfast, if that's helpful for council.
And the twenty eight days that she's talking about, say, somebody from the chef's school and all that come there, bread and breakfasts, do they actually have a limit? On how long somebody could stay there? Could somebody come and stay in a bed and breakfast for a whole year?
Currently, the the bylaw does allow, it doesn't, it doesn't max, it doesn't have a maximum number of days, concurrent days. But the new bylaw does it contemplate twenty eight days maximum. And that's based on the provisions of, you know, the equity with the the short term rental accommodations.
So. But they're not limited to the hundred and eighty days renting out for the year, right?
Through through the chair, no, that's correct. The hundred and eighty days only applies to the single semi converted and townhouse dwellings. And that's when it's rented as a full unit.
So could bread and breakfasts have people rent for longer times with the others only with the other bed and breakfast by law?
Through the chair, yes, they they could.
Well, that's kind of serious. I think we need to change that. Have a look at that.
Thank you. Once again, Mister Band Talker is our next delegation available.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma, we are just connecting Eric Irwin right now.
Thank you.
Hi there, am I on?
Yes, you are. Go ahead, Mister Irwin.
Awesome. Thank you for, first of all, thank you for letting me just speak today. I'll start off with, last week I had. I was looking for a two bedroom hotel room for a number of friends that were planning an overnight stay in Stratford. As it turned out, it was only one. One solitary opening available within walking distance of the downtown. The hotel costs about five hundred and thirty three dollars for one night. And although there are many short term rentals in the downtown core, only two were available for that night at an average price of six hundred and eighty dollars. This demonstrates in my opinion that there is and will continue to be a significant post pandemic demand for short term overnight accommodation in Stratford. To ban demand, which is not being fully met by the current supply. The main argument I often hear against short term rentals is that they're undercutting the hotel industry and and actual B and Bs. However, in my research, I found that the average cost for a hotel in Stratford is a hundred and fifty eight dollars a night, where the average short term rental. Is about a hundred and ninety five dollars a night. Short term rentals aren't affecting the patronage of hotels. In fact, the short term rentals are encouraging a younger demographic to visit and spend money in Stratford. The average age for booking a short term, short term rental is thirty five years old, where that average age is significantly higher for hotel guests. Many families prefer to book on a short term rental over a hotel because it provides more flexible options for them in terms of enabling their children to come and such. Short-term rentals are self-regulating, meaning that if a guest finds the accommodation to be subpar, dirty or otherwise not up to their standards, it's clearly outlined in user reviews and ratings that the listing will drop, attracting fewer guests. The same process can be applied to the guests themselves. If they prove to be loud, disturbing or messy, they will then receive bad reviews from property owners that will now be banned using the short-term rental platform going forward. The self-regulation has made short-term rentals safer people visiting the city, as well as helping ensure that they aren't a disruption for residents that are nearby. Overall, I'll keep it short, but overall, there needs to, there continues to be a need for short-term rentals in Stratford to accommodate the current and future tourists. Providing options to all demographics is important to the economic growth in the area. And adding additional bureaucratic red tape, additional costs associated with licensing will limit the growth of Stratford's hospitality, entertainment, retail and service industries, and deter additional investment and prevent many from renting their homes while they're away on vacation over the winter or during the summer out of cottage. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Eric. Moving forward then, I'm going to ask the deputy clerk to bring our next delegation forward, please.
Hi Barb, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, council members. Good evening. I guess you can't see me. I guess I'm just on audio, but that's fine. I have a few questions. I'm speaking on behalf of, just being a community advocate for the people. I researched, did some research today and found that many licenses to regulate short-term are strictly B and B. I'm not quite sure why you would take such a sophisticated, well-established group of B and Bs and lump them in with rooming houses and boarding houses. To me, that isn't even a comparable. And maybe that is why I look at this bylaw as being so punitive. But I have questions and obviously I'd like it to have written answers, but for tonight, I'll try and go through them quickly. And we would, I'd like to have verbal answers from the CBO, please. And then please include this in a future agenda when that report comes forward. So three point three says, no person shall rent or communicate with anyone to rent a short-term rental. This is not licensed, that is not licensed. I see this, and I don't mean to insult anybody, but this is really poorly written because no person. Okay, what is a person? Are you saying that it would be a crime for a tourist to seek out accommodations? That is what this says. If you had said the owner of a house or home or apartment couldn't do it, but it actually reads that you're actually going after the tourist. So is that what your intent is, Mr. CBO? I don't know your name, I apologize.
Mr. Dewar?
Through the chair, yeah, a person is actually defined in the bylaw and it does mean an individual owner, firm, proprietorship, partnership, association, syndicate, trust, corporation, department, bureau, agency or other entity.
Thank you. Short-term rentals are not to be used. I know we talked about weddings and stuff. And it said similar group, but I just want to be clear because a lot of people read these questions and then we didn't hear the answers or we came on late. I heard, but I heard a contradiction also. I heard that B and Bs would be allowed to do it or not do it. And then I heard something about being commercial. So is a B and B, just for those who came on late, is a B and B allowed to have weddings or similar groups?
Mr. Dewar?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, if I may, is it possible for the delegation to ask all of their questions at once in order to be consistent with the other delegations and then we can give staff an opportunity to respond?
Thank you.
So my problem with that is that they, everybody would pick and choose which ones they actually wanted to answer instead of having it clearly done so everybody could hear. So I would prefer, if that was okay, city clerk, that we just quickly answer these questions as we go. There are not a lot. So I think we need clarity on the B and Bs, is what I'm saying. Are B and Bs allowed to host weddings or mitzvah, whatever, of whoever comes to stay at their place? Is that allowed? I just need clarity.
Mr. Dewar?
Through the chair, we've answered that question. With the current writing of the bylaw, they are not permitted to have those events.
Yet the house next door to a B and B could have one?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, I do see Counselor Ingram's hand is raised.
I didn't see that. Thank you. And Counselor Ingram as well, so go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wondered, and recognizing that some people have joined late, this meeting is being recorded. So I'm wondering if, you know, if there's some answers that have already been given, if those folks have the ability to either wait for their written answers or to go back and watch the recording for the portion of the meeting that they have missed. And that way we're not repeating multiple times the same answers.
So going forward then, thank you, Counselor Ingram. Ms. Shaughnessy, if you could ask your questions, if they haven't been answered, we will allow Mr. Dewar to do so. But once again, these questions are going to be responded to in a follow-up report.
Okay, so I'm gonna flip through then, try and move this along. This one, five point three, I don't think anybody's asked this. Licenses void upon change of ownership. So
That was, that was asked.
Not quite like how I'm going to ask it though. So I'm going to give an idea of what could happen. B and Bs get booked up probably a year before. So I go to sell my B and B mid-season and it's already booked to the end of the year. Does that mean it is now illegal when the new owners take it over? Even though all those people have paid up for the time till the end of the year? I don't think anybody phrased it like that.
I'll let Mr. Dewar answer that question. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, if, in those particular instances, we would require another license. So the new owners would be required to apply to the city for a license and we would go through licensing, you know, the licensing process. And I would assume that provided everything is still in check, they would get another license in that case.
So then those people would be illegally there until that new license? Because I'm hearing two and three months to get a license through.
Mr. Dewar?
So through the chair, I think we answered this earlier as well.
No.
The licensing process right now requires items such as insurance to be provided. And that is one of the reasons why a lot of people apply in December, January, and we don't do the inspections until the spring, till they're ready to open.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm really concerned about that because now you're stipulating when somebody can actually sell their business or their home. That is a huge issue. I'm just going to skip a couple because I saw them mentioned. Also, you mentioned here on nine point one I, it's thirty minutes from time of contact to show up your property. Why is there a need for a thirty-minute window? I mean, in an emergency situation, a fire department can get into your place. Not, and if so, if you're not able to get there in thirty minutes because you happen to be at a doctor's appointment or something, if you're unable to get there, what kind of punishment are you saying? Because somebody didn't get to their house in thirty minutes?
Mr. Dewar?
So through the chair, in those particular instances, we're looking at, again, all short-term rentals. So we're looking at people who might be, you know, vacationing in Florida. We want to have a responsible person that's able to attend the property within the thirty minutes. So again, they need to be available if there's unforeseen circumstances. That's one item, but in most cases, they should have somebody that's available to be on call within the thirty minutes.
Thank you very much. Still not quite getting it, but I'll go with you on that one. Over the sixty-plus years of B and Bs in Stratford, have you had complaints? How many and what type of complaints? I ask this because I really find this bylaw to be punitive and it really should be separate from all the others. So, because I know it's complaint-driven. So could the CBO describe or tell me how many complaints that they've received and what type of complaints on B and Bs only?
Just before he answers that, Barb, if you have any other questions, we're getting to the ten-minute mark. Could you just ask those and then perhaps Mr. Dewar will follow up in written form and/or if he has time here to respond in a verbal?
No, that was my last question, other than a final statement, actually.
Okay, do you want to go ahead with your final statement then?
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that's fine. In my research, I want counselors to know this. I took this very seriously and did research other municipalities. And most municipalities, well, I won't say most, but the ones that I read did reviewing of licenses every four years. Not every year, every four years. Which, when I see something like this, I look at this as it is a make-work project. I already heard you want to hire somebody more. If you actually put it down to four years, it wouldn't be so onerous. And it would be, it would be more in line with being reasonable to the seniors who run these small income supplementing businesses. I would really like staff to go back and work on that one. And I know we've touched on the millions. And once again, on the ones that I checked, they were all sitting at two million. They were not the five million. So I have grave concerns about the stability of the bed and breakfast market here in Stratford with something like this. It should have been separate. And then you could have tailored it. I see what you're trying to do. It's like you're trying to make one size fit all. And I want to let you know that bed and breakfasts aren't one size fit all. Thank you very much for your time and I look forward to the answers written. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barb. And as we're waiting for our next delegation to come on, Mr. Dewar, do you want to respond at all to the complaint-based rationale with regards to this draft short-term rental licensing?
Through the chair, I think in that case, it would be best if we go back. I don't have all the complaints
Thank you.
At my fingertips. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Basilakos.
I do know that we had this discussion previously about licensing the short-term rental accommodations or the Airbnb-style accommodations. There was, at the time, there were a number of counselors on previous councils that were the ones that were involved when B and Bs came in to be licensed. And the licensing system that came in for B and Bs at the time was because there were significant complaints and some safety issues and things that had inflicted the city prior to that licensing. So I think the whole idea of licensing short-term rentals of all kinds has come out of that need for safety inspections and that. But I did have, I had a question for the chief building official and the city clerk about licensing bylaws. Because we've heard a couple of times about that they should be separate business licensing bylaws. But it's my understanding that the one, the other business licensing bylaw that we have encompasses all different kinds of businesses. And that, is it unusual to have a business licensing bylaw that encompasses either just different kinds of businesses under one or even related businesses under a single bylaw?
I'll turn it over to the clerk first. Thank you.
Through you, Deputy Meritzma, that is a great question. No, it is not uncommon. The city's business licensing bylaw regulates a number of business types in the city of Stratford. Some are related, some are not related. Some of the provisions would be the same across the different categories. Others have specific provisions or conditions that they need to meet. So it is not uncommon and often it is easier in order to have a consolidated bylaw instead of a number of individual different bylaws. And then that way you're ensuring that where you can be consistent amongst the business types, you are.
Thank you. Damn clerk. I'm gonna ask Mr. our deputy clerk to bring in our next guest. Sorry, Counselor Basilakos.
So I just, I wanted the chief building official to also have an opportunity to answer that because in my understanding, one of the reasons for consolidating these kinds of business, the short-term rentals, isn't that they have the same regulations that apply to them necessarily under the zoning, but there's similar kinds of building code and fire and inspection that fall under it. So consolidating those probably would make sense. But I'm just wondering whether in other, in their research of other municipalities, whether they do actually consolidate them for that reason.
Thank you, Counselor Basilakos. Mr. Dewar?
Yeah, through the chair, yeah, generally speaking, what we have seen in the municipalities that we did review, there was either schedules that dealt with the individual provisions for different types or in the case of the way that we've built the bylaw here, deals with all of the commonalities in a broad sense and then holds in on the specifics. In our case, holds into specifics on short-term rental accommodations, holds in on specifics on bed and breakfast where they differ from short-term rentals. So, yeah, I would say that that was generally the way we saw it. There were a few that were separate, but for the large number that we looked at, they were very much combined.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson.
Just want to ask a question. I think I know the answer, but I wanted to check. So right now they have to have a yearly fire inspection. Are we actually finding anybody that's having problems? And then the next part of my question is, I'm assuming this is a regulated yearly thing that the fire department has to do under the fire codes. Like, you know, what she's talking about, having it every four years. Is that even possible? Like, does the yearly fire inspection have to happen?
Mr. Dewar?
No problem, sorry.
Yeah, so through the chair, and I see the fire chief jumped on as well. Through the chair, there are provisions that are required to be done annually for the inspections. We did initially look at a two-year turnover and that was some of the difficulty with that. As far as the other provisions, yes, we could do a multi-year permit, but I do think there were specifically with regards to fire extinguishers and some of the fire safety equipment. And I'm not sure if the chief wanted to speak to that as well.
Chief Parity, go ahead.
Through the chair, the CBO is correct. We do have some things of our own, separate from the building code that would have to be checked annually. So for example, like Jonathan said, the fire extinguishers or smoke alarms of CO detectors, these things have to be checked annually, especially in places of business. We simply go around and make sure they, to verify they, there are good working order and they have to check. So we do have some provisions that we have to do ourselves in accordance with the Ontario Fire Code.
I'm sorry, Jonathan, I don't, I mean, John, I don't know if you know the answer to this or not, but have you, do we actually have current businesses that do have issues?
So through the chair, it's not typically that they have issues. It's that if we find something, we work with the owner just to address a few things if something was missed or if we find a battery wasn't working or something. And we assist them any way possible to make it a team effort to make sure it gets addressed for the safety of the people that are going to be staying there.
Thank you, chief. Anything further before we move on to the next delegation? Mr. Band? Mr. Bandtog?
Through Deputy Mary, it looks like we may have lost Janice Lindsay as the next delegate.
Okay.
But we will move on to George Mackey and if Janice rejoins, I will let you know.
Thank you.
Good evening, counselors. Am I on?
Yes, you are. Go ahead, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you very much. Good evening, counselors and city staff. My name is George Mackey and along with my wife Deborah, we operate Houston Hall Bed and Breakfast on Hibernia Street. Ourselves and the previous owners of Houston Hall have operated as a bed and breakfast since two thousand and eight. Please know that B and B operators are the true ambassadors for Stratford. We interact with our guests, whereas many, many Airbnb operators do not do that. You simply get a key code to an electronic lock and you enter the house and you leave the house. My first concern with this new bylaw is with the raising of the licensing fee to five hundred dollars a year. As a small business owner, what am I getting? What am I getting in return for that five hundred dollars? I just don't know. My next concern is with the required liability insurance increase to five million dollars. That increase will cost us as operators of Houston Hall an additional two hundred and fifty dollars or an increase of a hundred and twenty five percent. My greatest concern is 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 questions, how will the bylaw be enforced over all of the under the radar Airbnbs and others that are currently operating? I want enforcement to be equal for all accommodators. And right now that is not happening. Finally, is my concern that B and Bs cannot hold other events such as parties, receptions, baptisms, elopements and micro weddings. Many, many B and Bs here in Stratford have done so for many years without incident. What has brought about this change? We believe it is unfair and unnecessary. My comments have been brief, but please do not confuse that for a lack of resolve in my intentions. Thank you for your attention and consideration in listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Thank you, George. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'm not sure if Ms. Lindsay is available or we're going to move forward to Mr. Whitaker.
Through you Deputy Mary, I'll be moving on to Bruce Whitaker at this time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I like sort of like to start off, I think everybody has been very articulate on this this meeting and a lot of the people have been in Stratford for a very long time. And so I sort of cede to their comments. But we sort of, my sense of this is is we've built a foundation through Jonathan to weird that he's he's built sort of a case where we have a foundation and I think that we can perhaps build on it. And I was involved with Jeff Lunison and the city councilor, I think, five or six years ago. And it was all about balancing housing with accommodating visitors because we're very dependent upon for our economy, having tourism in Stratford and and we very much want to make sure that there's housing for for people within Stratford as well. So we, I guess we were overly successful as far as coming up with a solution. I know it's very complex because a lot of municipalities are are working on the same issue. One of the things that came out of it was really basing some of these decisions on data. And at that time, I don't know if it's changed, but a suggestion I would have is that we have, we really have a true sense of how many rooms we have in the city and how it's changed from year to year. Because my concern from hearing these long term B and B operators that have given their sweat and equity into this into running a business and representing Stratford really well is I'm hearing at a really incredibly busy time for all of us. We're trying to make money after the pandemic. We're being presented with a four percent tax and now we're we're having to be on a meeting when we should be really taking care of our customers and our guests. I'm a little bit confused of the timing of this and that will be part of one of my suggestions. But it is a difficult time. We're getting fewer people from traveling from the United States, which is obviously a result of the pandemic. We've now been hit with the four percent tax. And and we're 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 really trying to serve our clientele this time at the height of our season. And now we're being, we're having this stress of of coming up with some sort of way of addressing it. And I have to say for the for those that have been here and and they've earned their livelihoods as a bed and breakfast operation, I really feel for them because the their environment is now changing on how they make money. Not only from the perspective on an annual basis with additional expenses, but what I just heard it was the the divestiture side, which is is a real concern, especially with when one of the bed and breakfast operators mentioned that they're sixty five and beyond that. Well, they're looking for an opportunity eventually to to sell their properties and maybe have something to live on in retirement. So I think we have to be very compassionate to to these people and I think that we have to be very understanding of them. I think we're putting them in an extremely difficult position at a very difficult time with all the things that have happened as a result of the pandemic, but also being the timing that we're in August, which is our busiest time of the year. So I find that a very difficult thing to sort of take in. The other thing is, you know, in this implementation is supposed to happen in January twenty twenty three, from what I read as far as the the bylaws. So you're asking people to change relatively quickly. And that's a concern. My last concern is is again referring to data. My sense is that we have a dearth of rooms in this city to accommodate visitors. I'm certainly full and and people are really trying to find out where they can stay. And as I said, I think at one time we had eight hundred and fifty bed and breakfasts and now I think Karen mentioned that we're going to be down to forty one. My concern is how are we going to accommodate tourists coming to this city in the future? As well, on the other side, of course, I'm concerned about people having housing. And I guess that sort of comes to my solution. What I would suggest is that we that we move forward with a collaborative working group that that Jeff Lunison talked about at the very beginning. I think we have the foundation. I think we need some people and and some people are actually in the business to get together and have a discussion with Jonathan and other people and sort of work towards perhaps a better solution together in a sort of a collaborative working group. And that perhaps have some data and to push this decision till after the the heavy season, which is essentially October, the thirty first. And to have a bit of a pause and to come together as a cloud of working group and take that foundation that Jonathan's built and then make it even better come this November. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I'm going to go back and ask the deputy clerk if Ms. Lindsay has been able to join us.
Through Deputy Mary, it does not appear that we have Janice on the line.
Okay. Then I'm going to ask you then if if you could at this time to go through questions and comments that are in the Q and A and I see there's it looks like there's a few there. So go ahead.
Through Deputy Mary, we have eleven, twelve now questions in the Q and A. So I'll read through all twelve of those. So starting with the first one from Jeff Crowder that reads as follows, do I understand correctly that under the current proposal, short term rentals are only to be operated by the principal resident of the unit? Such that no one could use a second or investment property for these purposes? Critically important to preserve as many units as possible for long term rental to residents and discourage the hoarding of residential property. Question number two from Teresa Albert. This reads, thanks to RL, she asked every single question that is on my mind. Your faces all show how dismaying or surprising the errors, confusion and omissions are. I support her requests. Thank you, Teresa Albert Rosehurst. The next question also from Teresa reads, I would add to Mornington Rose questions. Why do we have two inspections? It takes hours out of our ability to run our businesses and seems redundant. The next question again from Teresa. Bonnie Henderson, there is not a clear cut defining line between B and B and S T R A. Other types of rentals, students, workers here on contract, off season, Airbnb type visitors, many B and Bs do both. Next question from Jane Marie Mitchell reads, just because something works elsewhere doesn't mean it works in Stratford as we are unique in more ways than one. The city needs to rethink a lot of what is in this and make it relevant to Stratford. The next question from Craig Thompson reads, how does the city plan to address the serious challenge of accommodation for students from the chef's school, University of Waterloo, off the wall and short term festival artists? All of these students are on tight budgets and need accommodation for more than twenty eight days. The next question from Teresa Albert reads, thanks Barb, licensing every four years also allows a better window for sale, reapplication of license and transfer. Could that be considered? The next question again from Teresa reads, could be simply submit photos or affidavits to show that the extinguishers are up to date, read the fire code. Next from Jane Marie Mitchell reads, can the fire inspection be a separate thing and still have the license be every four years? You could always revoke the license or hold it until the issue is fixed. That sounds reasonable to me. The next from Barb Shaughnessy reads, yes, they could be separate. It should be four years. The next from Jane Marie Mitchell reads, good idea, Bruce. And lastly, from Teresa reads, read Bruce Whitaker's comments. There are festival tickets being returned because people couldn't find a room to stay in. Has the festival and tourism recovery been considered and those stakeholders been involved? And that is all of the questions and answers at this time.
Thank you very much, Deputy Clerk. And and I want to thank those delegations and those individuals that have posted questions there. And as stated earlier, those will be addressed through the chief building officials office. So at this time, if there's nothing further from council, as as we close, Bonnie, Counselor Henderson and Counselor Seven, go ahead.
Things that I heard tonight, how are we going to address that? Are we going to wait till the ITS subcommittee meeting? Like, I'm hoping it's not going to come right to ITS committee, council committee, like.
I'll let the clerk address that.
Okay, thanks.
So through Deputy Mary, so the process following the holding of a public meeting is that any of the questions and comments submitted are consolidated and put into a management report that will then go to the infrastructure, transportation and safety committee. Any recommendation from that committee would then need to move forward to council for final approval and adoption. And this is the process that we follow for matters that go to a public meeting and then proceed with a follow up report to a committee meeting.
So if there's changes that we heard tonight, you know, things that I was surprised about, how do we go about directing that so that it doesn't have to keep going back and forth?
Madam Clerk?
So through you Deputy Mary, the purpose of a public meeting is to hear questions and comments from members of the public. Members of council are welcome to ask questions, but we do caution you not to take a position. Once this matter comes back to the infrastructure, transportation and safety committee meeting, that is when committee can consider the bylaw debate and provide additional direction as necessary before the matter comes forward to a future council meeting for final adoption and consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Seven and then Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, Mr. For I was just going to ask for clarity around the process for the public moving forward, but that pretty well. I just wanted to make sure the public that it's clear that this will be discussed and debated by council at a future meeting. So that's, thank you for clarifying.
Madam Clerk?
Through you Deputy Mayor, my apologies, Counselor Seven just triggered something for me. Just want to remind everyone who's watching and listening, additional questions and comments can still be submitted to the chief building official. And that can be done through email, mail, or by calling him. And that information is also included in the notice for this public meeting. So just wanted to reiterate that as well for everyone watching.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Counselor Gaffney, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And I think I'm asking a question for clarification too. Based on what I've heard tonight, it's it's I now have some questions. And as a city counselor, should I? Not should I? But is the procedure that I wait till the ITS committee meeting to bring up my questions of clarification?
I'll turn it over to the clerk and then I'll then I'll address with the final statement as well.
Yes, through you Deputy Mary. So if there are questions from members of council, you're certainly welcome to ask them tonight. We just caution you not to make any statements or take a position or provide any direction to staff. Again, the purpose is to hear comments and really direction should be at the next committee meeting when this matter is brought forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Follow up, Counselor Gaffney?
Yes, follow up, Mr. Chair, through you. Yeah, okay, thank you for that. And I will not ask my questions tonight because they may be perceived as showing a position. So thank you.
Thank you. So the final statement, which will talk to the procedure that's going to evolve as we go forward, city council will take under advisement the comments made at this public meeting. A follow up report on the draft short term rental licensing bylaw will be considered at a future infrastructure, transportation and safety committee meeting. If anyone would like to receive further notice of this matter, please email clerks at stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted on the city's website. This public meeting is adjourned. And I'll turn it back to the clerk.
Through you Deputy Mary, returning to your special council meeting agenda, item four is reading of the bylaws and there is one bylaw listed being a confirmatory bylaw. And it requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
Thank you. First and second, thank you, Counselor Henderson and Counselor Ingram, all in favor? And that's unanimous. And third and final, thank you, Counselor Senden and Counselor Bunty, all in favor? Thank you very much. And that's unanimous. And our last item is a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Basilakos and Counselor BD, all in favor? Thank you, everybody, and we are adjourned.